If we can stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Here we are again. I have no opening remarks. Joe, anything for you or any updates?
No.
Your last meeting?
No, no updates. I know Darlene's going to be presenting in a few minutes. I'll reserve when Darlene starts.
Okay. Then we move on to number three, public participation concerning the budget. Anyone here for public participation?
Three for three.
Three for three.
I'm going to quickly move on. Here comes Dennis. Budget workshop. Dennis, how are you? I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Darlene to come on up and share her piece. Tonight, we have special education facilities and the capital plan. Dan Krosick is here to talk about facilities and the capital plan. And Paul will also be addressing the capital plan as well. Before Darlene starts, I just want to clarify some misspeaking that I did when I presented the executive summary. I had talked about a particular line in the special education budget being down $600,000, but it was the overall special education budget was down approximately $600,000. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. It doesn't change anything that's in our books and whatnot, but I just wanted to make sure that was clarified.
Was that current or next?
In next year.
Okay.
Next year. The entire special education budget is down over $600,000.
Not a bad thing. Thanks, Darlene. Go ahead. Do you need the board?
She does.
So again, I want to thank Alan and Shannon for helping us through this whole budget topic very much. Just to, you know, talk about it and hopefully understand it better. I'd also like to recognize Tracy Ballow for her record keeping. She's our administrative assistant, and without her, Gen 1 would be crunching numbers forever. But she does a great job of keeping those numbers for us, and we're able just to plug them into our spreadsheets. So Monroe services students from the age of 3 to 22 with a variety of disabilities. Currently, we have 509 students eligible for special education services, which is 15% of our district population. In the 2021 school year, what's on record at the state level is that the average was 16%. I have heard rumors that it's up to 17% now, so we're just below the state average. This year, our biggest challenges during the budget process were increased enrollment, and I know Joe has talked to you about that already, and the social-emotional effects of COVID-19 as all the students return to in-person learning. The fact remains that special education enrollment and special education services change daily. I can't say that enough. The ever-changing needs of our students require programs to be adjusted to meet their needs. This is sometimes done on a daily basis. We must ensure that all the goals and objectives are being implemented, and to do this, we have used some grant money to increase staff. As most of you know, our budget is based on the current student population and possible increases to costs related to their programs and transportation. This is just some trend data that I believe I shared this with you last year also. Special education enrollment fluctuates throughout the school year with the largest numbers usually being students who transfer in during the summer. As of December 1st, we are already 40 -- there have been already 40 students who have transferred in with IEPs. When we compare it to previous years such as 2019, 2020 school year, there were a total of 36 students throughout the whole school year who transferred in with the district. So we've already gone beyond our greatest number of students transferring into the district in the past five years with six months to go in this school year. This just, again, this just is a picture, a line graph, just to show you how the special education population has increased over the last few years. Also affecting the special education budget is the referral process. So we receive referrals all year long. So when we compare the 2019-2020 school year with the 2021 school year, the number of referrals almost doubled as students returned to in-person learning. Now, some of that is due to some evaluations that were put off because of COVID, but then we had many referrals. As you take a close look at this bar graph, please notice that the blue bar represents preschool referrals, the red is K-12 referrals, and the gold represents students who were referred but not eligible. Not all students qualify for special instruction, but our school teams still have to go through the referral process on every referral. So they have to set up a PPT meeting, make decisions about whether they're going to evaluate or not, and conduct evaluations, and determine if a student is eligible for services or not. This school year, there have been 37 referrals, and 13 of those referrals have been from preschool. I've pointed out before that we still have 14 more preschoolers being referred from the birth-to-three program, so that's going to raise that number for this year. We hope that the spike in the number of referrals was due to COVID-19, but it's very difficult to predict. So before I get into the line items that we're going to review tonight, I wanted to review the number of staff members. I know Joe had covered this in his executive summary, but I wanted to review this with you. We've added staff members to effectively support students this school year through the ESAR grant, and Joe talked about those. On this slide, we have the .4 school psychologist, which just made the middle school psychologist whole at Jockey Hollow through the ESAR II grant. We have the four behavior techs that were done through the ARP-ESAR grant. And the special education teacher who started at MASCIC on December 1st is through the ARP-ESAR grant. Needless to say, these are positions that we put in, much like the kindergarten and grade-level positions that we put in because of increased enrollment. So these positions are going to be -- are added into the 2022-23 budget. You'll see them in there. And then the next -- we -- special education did get some other funding, some small grants, and we use the money to, again, support our students. The grant money was aimed at being able to support, build capacity within the district to support our students. So we implemented the four-point -- no, I'm sorry. Two speech and language pathologists were increased by a .4 FTE, so two different people. But that was just to be able to cover the hours of speech and language therapy on their IEPs. And then, since the preschool numbers continue to grow, we hired an additional staff for these students. So we have one FTE special education teacher, a 25-hour-week para, and .2 of a school psychologist to help -- that psychologist was only part-time, to help with all the referrals from birth to three. So we were able to use funding from an ARP-IDEA grant for this, and it was under special populations. At the Jockey Hollow School, we are in the process of hiring a special education teacher and a behavior tech to provide support to all middle school students with their academic and social -- academic and social-emotional needs through a flexible, small-group approach that incorporates therapeutic instruction -- intervention, sorry. Staff will be trained utilizing a school-based intervention program that incorporates therapeutic strategies throughout all aspects of programming. This will allow students to successfully access education while promoting behavioral awareness and coping strategies. So we're -- the plan is to have this program run right at Jockey Hollow Middle School, and it will be for students who are having -- experiencing difficulties. But again, we're trying to build capacity within the district so that we can keep students in district and help them.
This is like an extension of the program at MASCIC?
It's similar to -- it's not an extension, but yes, it's similar to the program at MASCIC that we are utilizing already. We've had pretty much success with that program up there. Students will be referred to this program through the student assistant team process, so they -- it's not, you know, not a dumping ground. We're going to put them through the whole process. This program may service students who are supported by 504 plans, IEPs, and general education students who are receiving interventions. So it's for all students at the middle school. And our goal is to have students -- there may be some students who will utilize this program most of the day, but there may also be students who will be able to go into their general education classes, come back to this program for some supports, and, you know, the goal is always to get them back into their general education program. And then our community-based program was very successful. The teacher -- however, the teacher is shared between MASCIC and the community program. So in order to build upon this program, which we, like I said, has been successful, we're requesting that this teacher be made whole for the 2022-23 school year. This half of position is not -- we did not take out of the grant. Our grant was a very small grant, so -- but we are requesting that this be made whole next year to build that program. In addition, we are exploring options for transition curriculum assessments and training, which can be funded through the grant. In order to maintain manageable caseloads for the next school year and provide the number of student service hours on IEPs, all of these positions were added into the 2023 budget. As Joe mentioned, the special education department's proposed budget is significantly lower than the current budget, mostly due to students who are aging out, and they -- when you combine their tuitions and their transportation, it's a significant savings. The increasing numbers of in-district students with special needs calls for an increase of staff in the 2022-23 budget. Any questions about that? I know it's a lot.
Before you move on, I just want to clarify. The ARP-IDEA grant expires at the end of this year, unlike ESAR II and ARP-ESAR. ESAR II, Sheila, we have next year. It's got to be extended by the following September?
ARP-IDEA, some of it can be extended in one more year.
In 2022-23?
2022-23, yeah. But like I said, it's small, so it's -- most of it's going to be extended by June.
Darlene, .4 speech?
Yes.
Those are existing positions you're increasing?
Yes.
Existing people?
Yes, existing people that were not full-time, and we just increased it to help with caseloads. The main drivers of the special education budget are professional education services, public and private tuition, and transportation. Professional education services includes outside agencies, services for students who attend magnet schools, and nursing care. The changes to the 2022-23 budget are in outside agencies and nursing. Outside agencies provides behavioral, mental health services in and out of district, and any other service that the district is not equipped to provide. This line shows an increase of $36,625 due to current changes in student program. The nursing line, however, is decreased by $26,602 due to the number of students who require this service for the next school year. In total, professional education services has an increase of approximately $9,000. Both public and private tuition are large percentages of our budget. There is a decrease of $79,445 in public tuition due to changes in student program. As I mentioned earlier, we continue to bring students back to district and plan to transition an additional student back in the spring. These calculations are based on a 3% increase in tuition for students who are currently enrolled in these programs. A small decrease in summer tuition is, again, due to the decrease in the number of students attending these programs. For two years, the district did not have any students attending the REACH program, which is a program Monroe shares with Trumbull. When a student was recently placed there, we were informed that the tuition had increased by $4,813, so that's that increase. Tuition public is approximately $78,000 lower than last year's budget -- or this year's The decrease in tuition private accounts -- in the tuition private account is due to those students who will be aging out, as I said before. This leaves us with a decrease of approximately $270,000. It may seem strange to then have an increase in private summer tuition, but we have noticed with COVID that more students are taking advantage of summer programs than they did before COVID. That's why we calculated that increase. Tuition private is approximately $230,000, a $230,000 decrease. And then along with that, we have transportation. So the other big driver is transportation. All of these lines are based on our current runs plus 3%, with the exception of students who are aging out and will no longer require that transportation. You can see the difference of approximately $273,000 reflected under transportation sped system-wide and transportation sped summer. In addition, we project one less run for the CES and ACEs runs next year for savings of approximately $46,000. So altogether, it's approximately $300,000 savings in transportation. And I decided not -- we decided not to do the excess cost sample this year. You've seen it for quite a few years, but we -- I have this slide that we added last year just to illustrate that, you know, the district budgets for excess costs based on the prior year. So in 2019, 2020, our excess cost was estimated at $781,000. That figure was applied to the 2021 budget in anticipation that the district would receive at least that amount. The problem was that the threshold was increased over $80,000 and COVID also played a role in that. So many students did not meet the threshold. We actually only received $508,000 last year. So this year, again, we're budgeting for the 508, but when we did -- when Tracy did the December filing of excess costs, it actually comes -- the estimate is $591,000. I know that was quick. Are there questions?
Darlene, just something quick. The 2021 actual, that was based on the 70% back from the state, and we got that? So we're using that same number, the 70%, hopefully?
Hopefully. And that can change at any time.
For next year, right.
Ideally, we were supposed to, you know, when it first came out, we were supposed to get 100%, but we, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
We have been getting 70% for quite a while.
Yeah, okay.
And the per pupil expenditure actually went down this year. So we did have, when Tracy filed, and we have the $591,000. You could see in last year, we only had 17 students who were eligible because the threshold was so high. Now, our per pupil went down, so the threshold's a little bit lower, so more students are eligible.
Okay. Questions for Darlene? Yeah, Dennis?
Pardon my ignorance. I'm new with this. The grant-funded FTEs are included in that course overall?
Yes, the requests, yes. Well, they're not in mine. It's in staffing, but yes, they're all in there.
Nick?
Could you put the line graph back up?
Sure.
The one before the referral. You would kind of quickly write that one.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that one.
Okay.
And while that's up, I just have a couple of questions. The alternative school, not the new one, not the Jockey Hollow one, the MASCIC one, I believe in the budget last year, we moved here. How is that going? How has the transition to this campus been?
I think it's been fine. I mean, in discussions, we have -- you know, they have their own spot, so, you know, it's working out for them. They have their -- again, they come in through the back, so they don't have to walk through the building.
I know that was a big concern.
Yes, yes, yep. So they don't have to. Some students choose to, you know, but the ones who don't, don't have to. So, yep. Did you have -- did you have any?
Well, I was just going to say, I don't know the space they had over prior, but I think there's, you know, they have a decent amount of space. I think, you know, with COVID, it kind of prevented us from giving them full access to different things, but like this year, they're using the weight room, they're using the gym. You know, there are different things that they're able to use here that they did not have over there as well.
And has there -- so one of the things that we talked about last year, even when they were in a different space that wasn't here, sometimes some of the students would actually be transported here to take a course here.
That is available to the students.
But are you seeing a higher proportion of that because they're physically here, or was it the same from the year before?
No. I don't think there's any.
And then I just had a question about -- it kind of ties into your budget presentation, but it's about this year. I know that we're going to get an update. We get our monthly update, and I know that we're on track for what we know, but this budget doesn't -- they're still at $500,000 on the Board of Finance side, correct?
It's actually a million dollars.
Just for special ed?
For special ed.
So is it a million for special ed and 500 for COVID?
Disaster relief.
Disaster relief?
Yeah.
So it's a million for special ed and 500 for disaster relief?
Yeah, which could be on the town side or the board side.
Right, but those are nonlasting. Those don't revert back, right? And this, your budget, doesn't anticipate using any of that in this. That's above and beyond overruns in your budget, right?
As of today?
No, no, I'm saying -- but I'm saying also that your budget presentation--
Oh, no, my budget presentation, yeah. No, for this budget presentation, no, everything has been incorporated.
Into the budget request?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Jeff?
Can you go back to the slide with the outside services? And I just, to help me better understand.
Whoops, what'd I do, Joe?
I think you said that, you know, I guess my question is, what -- can you give us examples of what outside services that we're not equipped to handle in district?
Okay, so for instance, some of our -- our BCBA comes from the outside agency. We don't have our own BCBA, so we hire her through a company called Constellations, so that comes out of our outside agencies. And sometimes there are just situations where, for example, you know, if a student has significant disabilities and we just don't have the staffing to provide those services such as speech and language, and that's one of the reasons that we increased our own speech and language pathologist. But sometimes, you know, the way that it's set up, if you have a student who has really significant needs in one building, and that person, that our staff, that can't handle that, those number of hours in a building, we sometimes have to provide services outside.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else? Alan?
How are the -- how are caseloads going, special ed?
Say it again.
Caseloads?
Yep. So we, with the addition of the MASCIC STEM teacher, we have been able to lower those caseloads a little bit. With the addition of the preschool, the new preschool, that those caseloads will be reduced because we're adding another staff who can pick up the students who are coming in from birth to three. We're still really tight at STEM because we had an increase of students with special needs at STEM, so we are really tight there. So there is, I believe, Joe, is there is a point five, an additional point five for STEM to kind of alleviate those. Fortunately, there are only, I believe it's eight students going up to MASCIC from eighth grade to MASCIC. And, you know, with the lottery, we're not -- I know, I believe it's more than eight that have applied to STEM, so.
So when you're looking at caseloads, do you do it by number of students or the number of student hours?
Both. So we try to, and that's one of the reasons in the beginning of the school year that we took someone from, you know, Monroe Elementary and put them up at STEM because of the need up at STEM. But we do try to look at both, you know, to -- again, when I say like our high school people, when they were, when they had so many students on their caseload, and then they had so many students in their guided learning, we have to ask ourselves really, how effective are we being with that number of students? I mean, we have a good, we have a good, we have good teams, and we have a good track record of supporting our students, but when you, you know, when those numbers get above 20, 25, you know, that it gets really difficult to individualize instructions.
25 kids for one special ed teacher?
We don't have that, but we were creeping toward that before we had this new teacher, this part-time person at MASCIC, so.
What were they being grouped? I mean, how would you see 25 kids on your caseload?
Well, we tried to do it through guided learning, so when we have, which is like a resource. So when the teachers are assigned to a guided learning, they try to get their students in that guided learning period so that they can see those students on a daily basis. And plus, the job for the high school teachers is a little bit more difficult because they have to touch base with all the regular teachers, and you know that, you know, they're scattered all over the place. So that's why we, you know, we really like to keep those numbers lower.
Nick?
First of all, will this, Joe, will this be linked to the agenda?
Yes.
This slide?
Yes, the department presentations. I'll link it when we're done after tonight because everyone will have to cycle through.
For the agenda from, that is for right now?
Yes.
Okay. With regards to special education students, how has mask-wearing compliance been? I know there's been some concern about that. Are you fielding any complaints, any problems in this population?
We have some students that we are working with, you know, to get them to, you know, they may have, you know, sensitivities, and we're working with them to wear their masks. I have to go back to when we were in the midst of COVID, and we start, and we brought our, you know, our, a certain population in for summer school, and, you know, everyone was really nervous about this, the students being able to wear masks, and they really rose to the occasion. You know, we worked with them, and we, you know, all the therapists worked with them, and, you know, we were able to have most of our students wearing masks. Great, thank you.
Anyone else for Darlene? Does any other board member want this printed out? I know it's going to get linked.
I'll print it out for everybody tomorrow.
I would like copies of the presentation, so. Yeah, okay. All right, Joe. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Darlene.
Thanks, Darlene. Dan?
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Dan.
I'd like to thank Nick for his time and insight, for being my liaison. Appreciate that.
Could you just hit it to the right end of the right arrow?
Okay, so for facilities, this year's ask for the budget increase is 8% over last year. Totals 106,000 increase over last year. Biggest drivers for that reason, and you'll probably, it'll be a little bit repetitive, may be the rising costs of supplies and services. So we've seen a lot of labor rate rises, and as I'm sure everybody's been seeing it, cost for supplies has gone through the roof. So it's driving some of these account lines very high. If we look at grounds maintenance, first line, $23,000 increase there is the ask. So main reason for that increase is the turf. So the geofil infill for the turf was one of the -- height. was one of the, uh, height, best way to say it is, that's really a yearly service that should be done. The level of, of geofill that belongs in the turf needs to be infilled on a yearly basis, and that wasn't happening. So that's a biodegradable coconut cork mix. So as it dissipates throughout the year, it needs to be refilled. Kind of a unknown factor, I guess. Wasn't really considered when we chose to use the coconut. So for that reason, it's about 20,000 on a yearly basis. So that's what's driving the increase in that particular line. If we move down to contracted services for septic irrigation, due to one of the cuts of the septic pumps, were not being serviced. That was one of the items, I guess that was cut a couple of years ago when the budgets were running tough. And I definitely feel very strong that our septic pumps should be calibrated and make sure they're working. So slight increase for that. Building repairs, same driver, you know, increased cost for contractors, materials, moving up $6,400. Last year's increase to the budget, and we've done really well. It's been a good push. And I think, you know, from the cut we had a couple of years ago, we're making a lot of headway and getting back to where we should be. You know, the cost of catch-up is a little bit more than maintaining. So just a little bit more, and I think we'll be there on that particular line. Emergency repairs, same thing. Basically, making sure we have enough in that line to cover any unforeseen costs. Equipment repairs for vehicles. So we have one plow truck, and as I get into the capital side of it, you'll see we have a plow truck on the capital budget. So for the repair side of it, until that vehicle's purchased, obviously with the older vehicle and breaking down quite a bit, it's driving those repair costs up a little bit. So we're just pumping that up a little bit more to make sure we have enough to cover it. Custodial supplies, you know, same drivers, increased enrollment, a little bit of PPE costs. We don't have grants for this current year, paying for that out of our operating budget. So it's definitely driving that. That's probably the largest line increase we have. Supplies for maintenance, same thing. Mild increase there, 5750. Try to absorb some of the increases in material costs and those kind of things. That's pretty much it for operating budget. Does anybody have questions about that?
Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna add very briefly, you know, two years ago, when we had the cuts throughout, the board cut, the replacement cut, we took a chainsaw to maintenance, if you remember. And when I saw the budget for the first time, and I saw the 8%, it jumped out at me. I think in a sense, we, I don't wanna say we lucked out, but last year the buildings were not used as much as they were in a typical year. And so some of the maintenance, I don't wanna say wasn't needed, but they weren't used buildings like they are in a normal, in a normal year. That changed this year, and that's definitely gonna change for next year. So as Dan was saying, we are playing just a little bit of catch-up on some of these lines. We're still making up for that cut from two years ago. But it's much cheaper to maintain than to replace. And so I just wanna add a little bit of context to the 8% on the operating side.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I agree.
Yeah, yeah, we do need, we need to slowly start creeping back up. Agreed. Is there another? Jeff?
As far as the turf is concerned, I know it wasn't taken into account when we started the project about the infill. So I had a couple of questions. Is there, are there other options that aren't an annual replacement cost?
Well, I think the other options would be then, you know, I don't know if they'd wanna do this, but, you know, switch into a rubber product.
Which was a big debate during our, our turf field meetings, which is why we went with the corn husk, coconut, which, and they told us during that, you know, one of the down, downside of that is that it's lighter, and when you have heavy rains and stuff, it's gonna float out, and you're gonna have to keep it, like maintaining it year over year. But as a committee, felt very strongly about keeping it as safe to the athletes who play on that field and not to go the route of-
There's a huge benefit to the field temperature as well.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there were so many benefits to it that it was worth the extra funding to do that. But we knew going in that that was gonna have to be maintained every year and filled.
So it's, I mean, I guess my, maybe it's a question for Ron. Joe, it should, if this is gonna be a $20,000 a year ask, I mean, shouldn't it, should it have its own line item? You know, as opposed to being in his operating budget?
Makes sense. Six of one, half dozen.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I, I, you know, it's, it's your guys' budget, so we could certainly add an account if, if you wanted to. I don't, from, from, I don't think from my perspective, as long as it's in the detail, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
It's just such a large line item to, I mean, look, I mean, the turf will need to be eventually replaced.
Five years, yeah, so five years.
From when it be, from when it started?
We're at the five-year mark, and they say about 10 years, give or take, is when the whole turf would need to, like the carpet, everything would need to be re, completely redone.
We have five more years now.
So, yeah, so I think that's well over a million dollars plus.
But as far as the maintenance is concerned, is, I guess, can you explain, maybe help educate me or the board about what happens when we don't do the infill replacement versus-
Sure. So the design behind it is if you have your carpet fiber, let's just say for talking, you know, was a one-inch fiber, right? So there's a certain amount of sand they use first, and then the geofill infill. And they say optimally, you would have like three eights to a quarter of an inch of the turf, you know, grass sticking up, right? The blade of grass. So if you don't keep it at that level, and you, and you do this, then this happens. And then you're walking, you're wearing the side of the blade of grass rather than just the tip. And you're, you know, so hoping to get the 10 years out of it, you might get eight doing that, you know? So maintaining something, using it the way it's designed to be used. And I, I think that was an average, right?
That was an average. It could, it depended on the use.
Depending on usage, depending on-
I mean, we use it a lot.
The maintenance.
Yeah, maintenance, that's why it was a big thing, keeping it maintained.
Doing the yearly maintenance and maintaining it at that level, you might get 12 years.
We could have 14 years, who knows, you know? It all depends. And I thought also, like, the fill was also a safety issue for the athletes playing on it.
Definitely a safety issue.
That's the other piece of it.
Right, the other piece is the concussion, you know, absorption.
Well, I, I would just say that, you know, the reason I asked for a line item, it just, it seems to be when something gets cut, it's, it often comes out of your budget. And I, I, you know, since we haven't been funding what we should have been funding all along, in my opinion, it makes more sense to have it as a line item. But, you know, I, I understand it will get tricky.
Just so it's-
We can do that.
Just so it's there.
Just so it's there.
Don't touch that.
Don't touch that. Yeah, I get it.
I agree.
I agree.
Shannon, and then Dennis.
Okay, so I, first off, I do agree with Jeff. I think it's like more of like a planning thing to, to make its own budget line, if that makes sense. But is it all the schools that need the septic pumps? How, when were they last pumped, and how often are they recommended to-
They're pumped on a yearly basis. So we do it each summer for the following school year.
Okay.
The service and calibration of the pumps and make sure they're working properly is twice a year. And it is Monroe Elementary, Massey, and Fawn Hollow.
Those are, well, if it's, is it Monroe, Massey, and Fawn Hollow? What about Jackie Hollow and Stepney?
They don't have pumps. They're a gravity system. So just a different type. Those just flow from gravity, where the elevations at the other schools need a pump system to get it there. So it's just those pumps that we need to make sure. And actually, Massey's, Massey's is really just the fieldhouse septic. It's not the school septic. So-
It's a fieldhouse that's not a pump.
Fieldhouse has its own septic system, and that system has a pump where the main high school is gravity fed as well.
Okay, so even if there's not a pump, it's, even, you know, if there has a gravity system, it still needs to be pumped how often? Like every-
It's yearly. So all the schools, every system, pump or not, is yearly.
Okay.
Every summer before the school year starts.
And, and did we do that last summer?
Yeah, yeah, no, that was definitely 100% done.
You're talking about the calibr, the pumps need to be calibrated.
Yeah, just the pumps, making sure they work, making sure there's not an issue, you know, making sure the calibration is set properly, you know?
And that's twice a year?
That's twice a year.
At every school except Jackie Hollow and Stepney?
Right.
Dennis?
Getting back to the field for a second, if we know we're gonna have a million-dollar bite in five years, or is there any capital put away that we're doing?
It's on the capital.
We're gonna talk about that next.
Hold that thought.
That's next.
The whole, there was great intentions initially.
Yeah, we talked about it forever. We, we had a great plan.
We did.
Well, I thi, I think there's also some track considerations that could be brought into the equation, which kind of never worked.
Yeah, so if we wanna talk about, this is the capital plan. So if we wanna talk about the turf, under Massey, bottom line, turf field and track replacement, that's where it sits right now. So five years out, you know, ballpark, you know?
Who knows? Who knows what the cost is in five years?
Could be pushed out a couple more years if it, if it wears well.
Yeah.
So here, here's what we're wrestling with right now, and you remember in the conversation, and we just talked about good intentions. When this started, we were looking at a replacement of the carpet of about $400,000. So we said we'd do $40,000 a year. We did that for a couple of years, and we all know what happened. The other piece that we're kinda wrestling here with this kind of $1 million number is kind of a placeholder right now. If we're gonna do the, if we're gonna do the, the turf, do we do the track at the same time? It does not make sense to do them both separately. So we can time it out so we can get enough time with the track and the turf to do them at the same time. It'd be better than going over the track to do the turf and then coming back and, you know, the track, or vice versa, doing the track and then having to go over it to, to get to the turf.
Yeah, I agree. We spoke about that.
And that's when we did, we tied the track into the turf project because of that same variation.
That's the way to do it. We don't wanna be the people that pave the road and then dig it up to put the pipe down, you know?
Yeah, I think the question too, so just so we're clear, when we did the, when we did the turf field, we added the two lanes, we added the two D zones in the, in the, on the field.
Yep.
And then we resurfaced the track.
Correct.
So I, I think the, the million dollar question right now, and I know we had someone coming out to take a look at it, is, is that what we'd be looking at doing is, you know, redoing the, the field, which would just be the carpet, which is gonna be more than, you know, $400,000 was the estimate five years ago.
Right.
We're probably looking at-
The current's 550.
550 now. The other piece is with the track, are we looking at just resurfacing the top again? Or will we have to do any work to the base? And obviously, you've gotta go deeper.
Yeah, 'cause if I remember correctly, the base was pretty good, which is why we knew we could get away with resurfacing it at the time because we were taking on the turf project. But again, you know, all these years later, I don't know if it's gonna be able to sustain-
Just to resurface.
Just to resurface again.
So that, I'm sorry, Joe. So the number we have in there currently at a million is about, right, today enough to do-
Yeah.
-a complete redo on the track and the turf field. You would definitely see some savings if in five years and they say, yeah, you can resurface again. It, it's about half the cost for the track.
My only reservation with just resurfacing, and I, knowing nothing, hopefully, hopefully we get someone that comes in, it's like, this substructure's great. I mean, one of the nice things when we had this, when we had the field done, was they did do a bunch of drainage work. We have, the drainage there is way better than it was when it was, when it was grass. So hopefully the substructure is in good shape. My only concern is, so we're looking at like 2026, 2027, somewhere around there to, to be doing this work. If we don't do, if we don't do any base work to the track, and that'd be great. So now push it out another 10 years, now that track will have been there for about almost 35 years-
Right.
-before we've ever done any, any subwork to it. Track was put in in 2003. If we just resurfaced it again in 2026, 27, you know, if we, if we do the 10-year thing, we're looking at it in 2037, it would be from, you know, 2003 to 2037 before we did any work at the base. I hope that's the case, but that, that just gives me a little cause for concern.
And even this assessment we might make today could change, obviously, in five years from now, right?
Yeah.
Maybe it goes 12 years and it's seven years from now, you know? So I think if you put a number in there that covers both fully, try to go from there.
Dennis?
But knowing hope is not a strategy. When can you assess the track?
We do have a company coming out, actually this week, to just, you know, take a look at it.
That's the substructure?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So you should be able to get them tied together, hopefully.
Yes.
Time wise. They took core samples when we did it, and that's why they said we were okay when we, when we did the field.
Right, right. Which I'm sure they'll do again, you know, once the decision's made and the time is to do it. I don't, we're not, I don't think they'll go as far as doing core samples. No, obviously, it's too invasive just to try to make an assessment, you know?
Well, without that, then how can you make the assessment? You're gonna have to wait a couple of years before you even assess?
I'll let you know after I meet with them this week. Cause I'm interested to see myself. It's new to me too, as, as well, you know, for sure.
Thanks.
Yep.
We'll follow up. We'll, we'll-
Yeah, we'll definitely.
Report back at the next meeting, 'cause I don't know if they'll have any answers for us this week, but, if not the next meeting, the meeting after.
Yeah, yeah.
The assessment people aren't the people who do the track, correct?
Uh, actu, actually, they are.
That's kinda a hen.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well.
You need to replace it now.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I think we know the answer.
That's all you're gonna find. If you know the answer, then you know. That's all you're gonna find. You're not gonna find a company who just assesses fields.
Yeah, yeah.
They assess them, and they do them. I mean, that's the way the world is.
Reputable company that we've used, obviously, to install the track, and I think we have a good track record. And if you check with John DeGeneres, I'm sure if we check with all the other, uh, ADs, you know, I don't think they'd be around long if they, you know? We'll have to see. All right, so moving on with the capital plan, if we go back to the top of the list, replace gym floor at Fawn Hollow. So, and if you go down, might as well where we're at, go to Stepney. It's the only thing on their item. It's the same gym floor. So these two gym floors were installed the same time, 1989, so they got a lot of age on them. Same material, same size. Stepney's is actually in, in worse shape than Fawn Hollow, but Fawn Hollow's showing somewhere as well. I put them both on the same year, hoping there was some cost savings to have, you know, a company, if they're coming out from New Hampshire, there might be some savings to doing them both at the same time. And we have four back up to Fawn Hollow, the walk-in freezer. So entire need of being changed. It's a very old mechanical system. Spending a lot of money on getting that repaired all the time. So that, that's due. It's on the capital budget. Jackie Hollow glycol replacement. So it's antifreeze in the heating system, right? Breaks down, it's, you know, chemical, right? It, it can become very high acid level. So we have to, when that starts to break down, there's additives they put in there to keep it at, you know, the right pH and keep it from corroding the insides of the heating system, pipes, valves, so forth. That's due to be done. Also have some work at Jackie Hollow that needs to be done in the boiler room. Not on the capital plan, that's part of my operating budget. It's just some repairs that need to be done. But to do those repairs, I need to drain probably a third of that glycol. So since I'm already gonna be a third of the way there, I'm adding it to this year's. I moved it up. I don't think it was on this particular year's, but since I'm doing, you know, I'm gonna be there a third of the way, it's the right time to just drain the rest of it and get it done. So that's what that is. Massey High School, stage floor. Hoping to do that last year. Hoping to do that last year at the end of the year, but ran out of a little bit of money, but, uh, and materials. The materials, I couldn't even get them last year, so I'm hoping this year that they're available. It probably has about six good, solid-sized spots that are chewed up, missing the material. It's not in great shape. They've been duct taped, taped over, you know, patched, whatever you can do to try to make it safe. So, that's definitely a need to be replaced. Parking lot repairs, so, for Masick. We're currently working on getting numbers for this summer's project, the capital funds that were given to us from last, you know, this, for this budget, to remove the oil tank. So, with the oil tank coming out at the back of Masick, there's gonna be a certain area that's gonna need to be repaved. And it'll come out of that, you know, capital budget that's been given to us to do those, certain amount of those repairs. Where that flows into the backside of the gym is in really tough, tough shape. So, that was put in there. I'm hoping to do them both at the same time, so we don't have patch, patch. This summer, we get that, um, oil tank done, and we can incorporate the paving for both pieces and bring them together. That would be the best scenario. Full, uh, the filter system at Masick. Was put in in the renovation, 2002 to 2004, 20-year life expectancy. It's there, you know, uh, running chemical water through it, obviously chlorine. You know, pressure 24 hours a day. It's showing some minor stress cracks, uh, small leaks. Who knows when that's gonna, you know, when that's gonna go. So, that's due to be changed, and that has a $60,000 price tag. And then system-wide, uh, there's the plow truck we talked about earlier. Really hoping we get our hands on that, 'cause not so much who cares a little bit about making those repairs, but to have a reliable vehicle to make sure we get the schools open. We only have a delay when everybody else delays, and we don't have to close 'cause you had a breakdown, and, you know, it's not great. You don't wanna be that person. So, that's that. And, uh, the Ventrack for snow removal. So, there was a different machine on the capital budget last year for snow removal. We were gonna place it at Jackie Hollow and do the campus with it. But previous year, we bought a Ventrack, is the name of the lawnmower. The type of machine it is, you can, they sell, you know, 32 different attachments. It's a, it's a very high-quality, costly machine. So, just to have the mower deck on it, put it away seasonally, buy another machine to do snow, you have that machine. So, we dropped the, uh, overall budget line because, uh, it's much less to throw the attachment on the machine you have than to buy a whole other machine and maintain two machines. Didn't make any sense, obviously, so that's what that is. Hopefully, we can do that.
Is it like a skid steer, Dan?
Yeah, small version of it, you know, it's diesel. It's a really nice, quality machine. So, we would add a cab to it. They sell that, and then put a snow blower on it, instead of having it sit in a garage waiting to cut grass, you know, four months later. Use it year-round. You know, you get the most out of your investment, so. And that's it.
Dan, if I can start the, um, what year is the truck that you're looking to replace with this?
That is a 2005.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Dan? I know we're gonna talk more capital, but specific to him?
Um, I guess, uh, can you speak to the Jackie Hollow roof? I know that we had an issue with the, um,
Yeah.
there. Can you speak to what's going on?
Yeah, sure. So, in the gym section of Jackie Hollow, and it's an open roof, so there's no drop ceiling. It's just, you know, you look up, see your beams. It's open. There's six roof drains in that section of roof. When the building was built, they cut out a two-foot-by-two-foot section for each drain to go in. It's over, that was oversized. It was too big of a, they didn't need a two-foot-by-two-foot. So, I think, you know, during construction, maybe the plan was, hey, you go cut the holes, I'll be behind you putting them in, whatever. So, when the guy went to put the drains in for the pipes, uh, you know, you got your, the belly pan underneath, and then your drain up top. And those two come together, they cut the holes so large, there was nothing there for that to grab. So, they ran two pieces of Unistrat. It's kinda like an angle iron that, they use it in construction everywhere for all types of purposes. They ran two pieces for each drain, uh, across from beam to beam, which turned out in that section to be about two and a half feet long. Unfortunately, they never welded them, they never bolted them in, they literally laid them across the top of the drain. There's a, a ring that sits around the drain. It's only two inches wide. So, you know, it's sitting on the edge like this. So, I had unbeknownst to us, right? So, we had a leak in one of those drains. I had a roofing company come out to do the, uh, reflash one of the drains. So, while they were up there doing that, and it's, it's minor work, it's not very, you know, invasive type of stuff. They're not cutting the roof sections or anything, just literally moving the gravel, chipping away a little bit of the roof material, getting down to the flashing, reflashing it, and done. That little bit of vibration, because these weren't attached, just caused it to vibrate off or whatever and fall, right? You know, so, unfortunately, I mean, fortunately, um, the staff member wasn't seriously hurt, but very well could have, you know. So, we have a scissor lift at Masick. We towed that over to Jackie Hollow, got on that, went up there. It's about 25 feet up, 30 feet maybe, the gym, uh, at Jackie Hollow. You literally grab every one of those pieces at bar and pull them out with your hand.
So, they were all like that?
Every one.
All six?
All six drains. Each drain has two pieces of strut, so 12 pieces. All 12 were not attached.
The one that, the one that came down the other day, there was another one that wasn't even there, so that must've come down.
So, the, you know, the design for the two pieces of strut for each drain should've been 12. They were 11. So, did one fall out at another time. I don't know. You know, they do, you know, I see what they were doing. They put it in there, took the upper and lower sections together, tightened it up. Everything's tight the day you leave. But 20 years later, 10 years later, when you have expansion, contraction, and building moving, and, you know. So, they're all just sitting up there loose.
So, what's the fix, Dan?
Thanks, Jerry.
So, the roofing company, uh, we went and looked at that, and, uh, they're gonna fabricate some brackets, and we're gonna drill and bolt them in.
Draw, draw and bolt them in.
They were all inspected, and that's why the gym was closed the next day, and it's okay now?
Yeah, yeah, so we went up there and, like I said, well, actually, that day.
Yeah.
And, uh, checked all six. Sure enough, they were all loose, so we just removed them. They weren't doing, serving any purpose, loose, so we just pulled them out.
Right.
So, then you can use the gym until we get them reinstalled. We're looking at Christmas break to reinstall them.
Thus, the emergency repairs budget?
You got it.
Any recourse?
Dennis?
Any recourse to the building company?
No, that school's, that school's how old, Joe?
98.
98.
I understand the construction management company that did it has filed for bankruptcy years ago.
Yeah, they're no longer in business.
Good question, though. And anybody else have any questions for Dan? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Jerry, you gonna use that for the capital?
Paul's got it. Paul just wants to talk a little bit about his technology, uh, cap.
Okay. Joe, we're going off the new one that you handed out tonight, right? So, the new one.
Good evening, everyone.
Hey, Paul.
Um, I know that, uh, during my budget presentation, I touched upon the capital expenditure. I know there's new faces on the board, so I just wanted to explain what some of these projects were so that everybody understood. So, I was asked a couple of years ago to come up with a five-year capital improvement plan. Things were going great until COVID, um, so really threw a wrench into things. Obviously, one of the things that we're trying to do is level off the ask year over year. Instead of, I need, you know, $300,000 for laptops, try to, try to level it year over year. So, what did we do last year or this current year? We did complete the K5 laptop replacements. Those are all done. It was about 120 laptops. We also completed most of the computer replacements for the offices. We're about 80% at this point. We'll have more done probably by the end of the month. And we also received the ECF grant of $159,000 for 500 Chromebooks. Just like I spoke the last time, our challenges, supply chain issues, rising demands, rising costs. All right, so this was the list, and I'm gonna go through each of these real, very briefly, one by one. Before I do, this was what, what we asked for last year and what was approved. So, we had asked for the, uh, $160,000 for the laptops and the $30,000 for the, uh, it says lab replacements, but they're actually desktop replacements.
Those were the replacements at STEM, right?
Yes, those were their.
For that classroom?
Yes.
Okay.
And actually, let me back up here because, uh, yeah, I'm missing a couple of things. One of the things that we did. Yeah, the, the lab, uh, and I think that was on my, my, uh, operating presentation, so, yeah, thank you for pointing that out. So, we also completed the, um, STEM, uh, here at Masick replacement and the, um, tech ed lab at Jackie Hollow. All right, so the projector replacements, we have a lot of projectors that are very old at this point. This was, again, years ago. This was a one-time massive purchase where they said, we want smartboards in every classroom, and there was money left over. And so, these things are dying little by little. We are replacing them, um, through our, um, operating budget when they go, but I'd like to be a little bit more proactive. The reason being, especially now, um, if a projector fails in a classroom, assuming I get an immediate P.O. and Ron's team is great. You know, I can put a request in, get a purchase order, but the lead time is still two to three weeks. And unfortunately, this isn't something that we can leave on a shelf and stock. The reason being is there are different types of projectors. If you notice, right in the front of the room here, this is what's known as a short throw projector. We have been going to those types of models where they're short throw, instead of the older type models where they may be in the middle of the classroom. You know, with an arm that comes down out of the ceiling. We're trying to get away from that just because of the wiring and logistics and stuff. So, we're trying to, uh, get all, everything to a short throw model. But we do have short throws too that are now getting old that we need to replace, and they don't always fit the same mount, uh, same focal point. So, there's a lot of variables with these, with these projectors. So, if we can incorporate this into a planned replacement, we can figure out the worst of the worst and get them replaced before, um, before they fail and have some spares. I mean, if we needed to take an old projector and utilize it as a spare until the new one comes in, we could do that. Network switches, uh, I always joke with Joe, 'cause he's like, what's a network switch again? So, the network switch is, is really their components that tie the entire, uh, infrastructure together. We have core switches at some of the locations, like here at the high school and at the data center. And then there are switch closets that, again, wireless access points, things like that, tie back into a switch. Switch ties back to a core, core pulls it all together. We have replaced a couple of key switches, but again, a lot of them are beyond 10 years old at this point. All right, virtual server hardware. This is something that we have been slowly but truly chipping away at. Our physical servers, back in the day, it was, if you wanted a new application, you bought a new server. Well, that's not really the way to do things anymore. Now, you buy a physical box, and on that box, that, that piece of hardware, you can have three, four, five, six servers now running on one box. Where in the old days, it was, you'd need six servers to run six different platforms. So, we're consolidating down, um, our servers. One of the big things that we've done too is with the Google Classroom and the Google environment, we've taken a lot of users' home directories. These are their drives, and we've put them up to Google Drive. That does a couple of things. Number one, makes it easier for them to share documents. It's available anywhere they have internet. There's no need to VPN back into a network server here, so it's, it's a lot more secure. And in the case of some of the cyber breaches that we've seen, for example, Bridgeport. Bridgeport, Connecticut suffered a catastrophic, uh, breach, cybersecurity incident. It was ransomware. There were staff that had lost decades worth of data that were stored on their unpatched servers. Any of the data that was up in the cloud, like Google, was completely untouched and available. So, um, I, I don't, I don't need any more reason other than that. So, again, we're, we are really trying to reduce the number of servers that we have to maintain. Because, you know, every month on the Windows platform, there's always updates, vulnerabilities, you know, and my team is already stretched, and we have to keep on top of every single vulnerability that gets published every month, so. Classroom display upgrades, uh, this is for use where interactive isn't required. And I know, Nick, you had touched upon this during my last budget presentation about, you know, the Wi-Fi capability. This isn't a one-size-fits-all. We have piloted a couple. I'd like to move forward with more locations. I know that, um, there's been talk too about, you know, not having a teacher tethered to the front of the room. You know, they have a laptop. They can now walk around, connect wirelessly, keep an eye on their kids in the classroom, uh, and still keep it interactive. In some cases, uh, they can pass control to a student, say, hey, Johnny, show me what you've got. So, there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of benefits to this. But again, not one-size-fits-all. I mean, you know, smartboards will still have a place in the district. Teacher laptop replacements, yes, we just did 120 laptops. But again, I don't wanna get into a situation where I have to replace another 120 laptops. So, we do have laptops that are in the fleet that are now beyond their useful life, particularly Jackie Hollow right now. at Jockey Hollow right now, the pilot yogurt devices, they're pushing seven, eight years old. I'd like to start getting them replaced and keep funding the replacement. We'll replace the the oldest of the old year over year so that we can keep the technology refreshed. Chromebook replacements, Chromebooks typically have a five-year lifespan. We use the Chromebooks very, very heavily, obviously, in the classrooms. We have been fortunate between the COVID funds and the ECF grant. This should, my plan is, is by the end of this school year, to get a final count, and we have an inventory, and I know there are a lot of devices that are out right now and used by students, but the idea would be for the next school year to really go for more of a one-to-one initiative at the high school and middle school at a minimum. We should have enough devices to do that. Again, ongoing lab, office, desktop replacements, so 30,000 every year, and we can continue to get rid of the oldest of the old. And then finally, security additions and updates. We haven't really spent much in the way of security since Sandy Hook. So there are definitely some issues that need to be addressed with security, cameras, access control. There's some updates that need to be done. So this would be a $10,000 every year, invest in the in the security additions and updates.
Paul, are you still switching from analog to IP on some of those, or are they all you're all switched over now, do you know?
All of the cameras are IP for the schools.
Great.
Yep, yeah, they're all IP for the schools. The exception to that would be, like, for example, the Masic Gate camera. While it is overall an IP connection, it's a forehead camera, so there there is some analog, but then it gets converted to IP, so.
Yep, yep.
But yes, everything is IP. All right, so by the numbers here, you know, and again, we don't necessarily need to buy new switching equipment every single year. So this would be an every-other-year event, and then the offset years would be virtual server updates and consolidation. So at the bottom, you can see year over year, about 192, between 192 and 190,000 per year. But with that, I'm confident that we can fund everything we need, and, you know, I'm not looking to be on the bleeding edge of of technology and have the latest and greatest, but we we just can't support eight, nine-year-old laptops, especially if we have another pandemic or we have to go full remote. You know, that was that was painful. All right, I think that's the end. I don't know, hit the button. I don't think there's anything more. No, that's it.
Dennis, go ahead.
Question on the projector replacements, because obviously they're getting up, you know, dated, and, you know, I don't know what the bulbs are now, but I thought they were like 600 bucks before, so.
Depends on the model.
At what at what point do you switch over to 85-inch screens, you know, TV, you know, monitor screens?
Well, again, so that's that kind of goes in hand with the the display upgrades. For example, if I have a display in a classroom and they don't need to actually physically touch the screen, everything, there's not going to be a projector in that room.
Yes.
That projector goes away.
Okay.
Or it gets moved somewhere else where it can be utilized.
Okay, so it's not necessarily 7,500 that long then, because you may be switching over to smartboards, basically, or not smartboards, TVs?
Correct, yeah.
But then that 7,500 might just go into the third line.
Yeah, well, 75 is a low number for that, right?
Right.
They're coming down, but, you know.
Well, the, yeah, the projectors themselves have come down in price dramatically, you know, as the technology gets better.
Right, right.
But the problem is, is now you can't you can't get them, you know, they're they're two, three-week lead time.
You mentioned everything going off local hardware and going on to, you know, basically the sky, basically. How much redundancy do we have in the system so that we're safe if we did have a bridge board episode? Is everything backed up?
Not only is everything backed up, it's backed up using what's called the three-two-one rule. And essentially, it's backed up twice in two different types of media, and then it's stored to tape, it's air-gapped to tape. I will not sit here and tell you that we are completely bulletproof, because no system is. However, I do feel confident that if we did experience a cyber event, we could recover. How long will that take?
That's the question.
We have a lot of data, so it could take a day or two. Some of our core systems, though, are offsite. For example, our student information system, Power School, that is hosted and maintained by them. Our financial system, Munis, is in the cloud. So anywhere where it made sense for key critical things to be hosted and and given to the vendor to safeguard and, you know, they have, obviously, Power School has a massive data center.
Right.
I could never duplicate that that type of security. So it makes sense to pay them a little extra and have them host it, so.
But for the key items, the reduction in downtime is pretty good, and it looks like you have a good plan. Anything you'd like to add to that at this point?
As far as what?
As far as money.
Everything ties to money, but the question is, if you're talking a day down, two days down, that's pretty catastrophic, right? When we're talking hours, that's a little, that's a different issue. So what can get you back operationally in general, depends on what attack it is.
Sure. Yeah, you can't, yeah.
I mean, listen, I had a lightning strike years ago that took out my core switch, my whole data center, you know, and miraculously, we were back up, even though the equipment was fried, we were back up probably about a half day later. I mean, thankfully, it was just before the start of school, and school wasn't in session, but yeah, I mean, the police department was affected, phones were affected, it was-
Shut down everything.
It was a nightmare, yeah. Everything's time-related, and everything is, you know, situational, and you can't plan for everything, but, you know, you feel pretty comfortable about what our backup scenario is now with what we've will be giving you.
One other piece to this, though, and I'm glad you brought this up, is cyber insurance. And I know that the town is is looking to get a cyber insurance policy. Again, to that, to what I had said earlier, I am confident, will not guarantee, but I am confident that we could recover from a cyber attack. What I cannot guarantee is that if we are breached and data is stolen, that that we we could very well be liable, and that's part of what the cyber insurance does. A couple of years ago, cyber insurance, it was kind of fancy, whatever, it was kind of a new fat thing, and as as a member of Kerma, we were automatically covered. Well, obviously, the cases in cyber ransomware went through the roof, and Kerma said, we're not covering you anymore, you go out on your own. Well, part of this now, and we're doing a lot of things on the back end. One of the things that we're looking to do right now is implement, it's called the Center for Internet Security, and they came out with their controls version eight, and we are, my goal is, is to get fully compliant with that standard by the end of this fiscal year.
Okay. But funding for that endeavor?
Well-
Is that anywhere that's coming out of operations?
Oh, yeah, no, no, it comes, it comes, it comes out of operations, but more importantly, that that will help with our cybersecurity insurance and premium, but one of the things that they have recently mandated is two-factor authentication.
Crowd pleaser, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And for those of you that don't know what two-factor authentication is, if you go sign onto something, you then get either a text message on your phone or you carry around a little token with a code that constantly changes, okay? And they have apps for the phone, too. That's two-factor authentication. So cyber insurance companies won't even look at us until we enable two-factor authentication for anything external facing.
For every user, right?
Every user that needs access to anything external.
Yep.
Like web mail.
That's all of us?
That's all of us?
I don't know what the cost is yet, but, you know, and that was one of the reasons why, too, there was an increase in the in the repair account was to help offset some of that.
Thank you.
Yep. I wish I could give you a quicker answer.
Yeah, it's a evolving problem.
Yes.
Jeff, go ahead.
Well, are these lab desktop replacements, are those like specialized computers?
They are. Yep, they very much are. They're bolstered up with with memory, usually higher processors, and definitely better video cards. They're not the run-of-the-mill video cards, because these lab, like, for example, STEM and the Tech Ed, they do like CAD stuff, things of that nature, CAD-driven type of things, some of the robotics stuff as well. So, yeah, these are definitely specialized computers.
Any other questions for Paul? No? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Next. Thank you. Joe, do you have anyone else?
I don't, no, that's all of our, it's all the departments.
I know that I know we're all interested in seeing the 40,000 a year replaced for the turf field, so Joe and I will reach out to Board of Finance about that, see how we can fit that in, we put it into capital or, or, you know, where they stand on that. I think that would be a good question, because I think we're, we all would like to see that caught up and put in every year. Nick, here.
Yeah, can I just ask one question about capital? We were going to do, were we going to do more on capital, or was that, that was it?
Joe, this was it for capital?
That was it, but I'm glad you asked, because I meant to say this after the end. Look, we talked about this today. One of the things I'd like to do is maybe on a Saturday morning or something, is walk the buildings, just so you can see a lot of this stuff. Last year, I tried to bring pictures, pictures don't do it justice. Like, I remember the pictures I had last year of the auditorium floor, they don't do it justice the way even Dan was explaining it, so I think that could be a good thing, and maybe we can try to find either, you know, a Saturday or even, I don't know, a weeknight something, and forever whoever could make it.
We need daylight, so maybe a Saturday or Sunday morning? I mean, I would be interested in that myself.
Because I, like, when we did the roof, like, just taking the tour of the roof and all that, you get to see it really firsthand, so.
Yeah.
Throw out an email or some data?
Absolutely.
Great idea, Joe.
Nick, go ahead.
Just, just very briefly, on the, this is for Ron, on the capital, so on the sheet you gave us tonight, we have totals at the bottom that show the year one, like FY '23, FY '24. Now, what are the funding vehicles for this money?
So that would be determined when it goes to the town.
Okay, because they have to see what, so my, Dennis doesn't like when I ask questions I don't answer to, but anyway. The reason why-
Not always right.
The reason why I ask that question is because we have, like, a balloon, on this sheet, we have, like, a balloon in year three in FY '25, and then the Board of Finance has to do the whole thing where a certain amount rolls off of, like, for bonding, right? And only a certain amount can come on, so this can come from a lot, a lot of different places, and although tech is very well spaced out because of, like, roof replacements, like, two big roof replacements in year three, and then, like, not a lot in year four, there's, like, a balloon in a plan, so.
So again, what usually happens is it'll get reprioritized, not not only here, but town projects, too, because that that's what gets incorporated into the town-wide five-year capital plan.
Right.
And it'll get leveled out.
Okay.
I mean, things, things will, you know, year three comes, something else may be a priority that, you know, may have been at year four or something, or vice versa, so that-
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, you know, looking at this kind of for the first time at the bottom of the totals and seeing how, you know, I don't think in FY '25, we would have such a big roll-off in bonding, for example, that we'd be able to put all of this on, but if you look at the columns above, you know, you have two roof replacements, and you don't want to push that too much, because then other things happen, so I guess we'll just wait until, like, the budget passes and this whole thing goes into the town capital plan, but I think it's something that the board should continue to kind of talk about even after the budget is done, so we can see where things would would play with the town.
Yeah, yeah.
Did we fund any of the turf in the beginning?
I think the first two or three years, or we haven't in the last two.
Just the first two?
First two.
I can't remember.
Yeah, there's, there's 80,000.
There's 80, that's all we have.
Two.
Any other questions? Jerry?
Motion to adjourn.
Jerry, you get a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
I have a question. Just quite a clarification for the new guy. I'm a little confused because now that things bandy around, we want it, we talked last time about after the communication, getting more, you know, community involvement, although we didn't have anybody speak tonight. I, you know, been newly newly found that, you know, I'm now assaulted by phone calls because things happen on, with the Facebook, right? Questions come up. I just want to make sure that I'm reading, and I've gone through it like a crazy man, all the stuff you gave me to read, and I just highlighted it out. It's like, our role, my role, our role as a team, right, is to field questions but not to answer questions. Am I correct? Right? Because I don't want to give the misperception or tip up people who call me up for answers. I'm like, I'm not answering, but I can direct you to the right place. Things came up in Facebook this week, and I want to make sure that we all know that you're not answering these things, because people, is that the standard of board? It's like, nobody's speaking for the board, it hasn't come up at the board. The topic I'm talking about was separating out kindergarten, K through whatever, it came up through, I guess, a Facebook post. And, you know, I just want to make sure that we're all clear that those issues aren't ours to answer, it's ours to bring to your attention and for you to come up with a plan, but not for us to be answering those things or appear to be answering those things, because it's it's going to disrupt what we planned on doing before, is getting the community involved, you're making them more confused. And, you know, we want to make sure that they're driven here to make sure that they're asking their questions and that we can get them answered. A fair assessment of my role? Is that the rules?
Yeah, we typically don't answer any Facebook posts.
I don't know if there's any rules.
It's kind of a rule, but-
Playing by the same rules.
What, what, was it like a personal post?
No, it was, it was, I can't remember now, I think it's Far Far, and I don't follow her, but I got asked afterwards, it's like whether we should separate out kindergarten all the into different schools and transport the kids around. I haven't heard that yet.
What started that? Like, did somebody say something, was it?
I think she started it.
Okay.
We got to a concept because other other towns do this, right?
Okay.
So it was a general question, but now all of a sudden, it's been around, people calling me, what's your standard, you guys against it because of transportation? Like, it hasn't come up, and I'm not going to-
Well, that that was addressed years ago in a facilities study.
Right, it may have been addressed, but it hasn't been addressed, at least since I've been here, by this group, right?
When, when I get questions, I try to divert them to the principals, the superintendent, not the best thing.
And as much as I would have liked to answer, respond to the people, it's like, that's not my role, right? I mean, if I was, I'm clearly going to say it, I'm an individual, it's an individual perspective, not a board perspective.
Right.
That's right.
And people were confused enough to be calling me saying, that's the board perspective? It's like, before I answered, I got myself in trouble, I figured I'd ask you guys.
You can only speak as an individual, and that should be clearly labeled, this is my opinion, not the opinion of the board?
So you're better off than saying it.
I didn't, because I, so I was body, make sure I was playing by the right rules.
Collectively, we are the board, individually, we are not.
Dave, quick question. In regards to the next meeting, I think it's mostly questions in regards to the budget, right? Is that, is that the plan as far as-
Yes, next-
Just open dialogue discussion around the budget? Any unanswered questions?
So we hear all the departments like we did now, and then next meeting, which is Monday, 7:30, normal meeting, then we start diving in.
Okay.
Couple of things, too, if you have questions ahead, send them, send them ahead. It's just easier for us to-
We did that last year, did we create like a spreadsheet and like-
We've started, we've started putting questions together, and so I'll, I'll send that out Friday with the, our weekly update.
That's the best thing, because it might take some research by George.
Yeah.
Yes.
And you're going to send us all the new-
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, it was good last year, we had, we had a spreadsheet, and you would submit any questions specifically so ahead of time they could investigate and get the answers quicker when we were at the meeting.
I'll send that out, because we may have picked some up, we may have missed some, so you guys can take a look at it if you have other- so you guys can take a look at it if you have other questions. We'll have some answers to some of the stuff that's been addressed in some of these workshops already, too. But then we have regular meeting Monday night, meeting January 4th, meeting January 18th, and it's by January, by that meeting, we'll have to-
We have to be done.
We'll have to be done with the budget to make a recommendation to the first slot.
So we'll plan time in each meeting to have discussions on this budget, so.
Are the January meetings our regular Board of Ed meetings?
They are.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're both on Tuesdays, because I think there's a, we come back on a Tuesday after the break, and then Martin Luther King.
Yep.
Regular post meetings. Dennis?
I'm new, so pardon my ignorance, but I'm a little concerned that the public hasn't been here since we put that big number out, and nobody's been here to say anything. Is that normal?
Yes, very normal.
Very normal.
Thank you.
I can't remember the last time-
Since I was eight years old, coming to board meetings, it's normal.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah.
I mean, I would say-
The loss wasn't that bad, right?
Five-plus years is probably the last time I remember having, like, true public participation in our budget process.
And then, Ron, can you plan a little 10-minute presentation like we talked at either the next meeting or the following one?
Yeah, walk through the mill break, yeah, sure.
Yep, just a recap.
When would you like to do that, next Monday?
Let's look at the agenda, Joe, and see how much we, or the following.
I know it's been stated several times in several presentations where the SFPs were spent, but I just want to make sure that we had a good grasp of where that money is and what's left and what's in '23.
Yep. So email Joe all the questions, and then he and Ron can get us some answers. All right? Do I have a second on Jerry's motion? I didn't forget, seconded by Shannon. Any objections? Motion passes unanimously. Good night, everybody.